All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 12:14 PM on Monday, July 19. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shank, President.
Chaz Sexton Duranian, President.
Veronica Cal, President. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded and it should be on channel nine as well. And it will be posted on YouTube when the meeting's over. Chairman's additions or deletions, I do have one addition to 2.2. I would like to add the vote on a letter. So please add that. And that is it. Anything, Joe, or Chaz, to add?
I do not.
No, I do not.
Thank you. All right. We're going on to 2.1, the interim advisory group meeting to review resumes in the selectmen's chambers. We have the clerical union, the supervisory union, and the non-union contract personnel with us. We are missing the fire advisory group, but I knew Marty was on vacation. So he and I had a discussion. I didn't know if anyone was going to come for that. We are also missing highway water and we are missing the police. So we'll see if we have time before the interview time to get their thoughts. So everybody has to pack it. We're kind of running this as a workshop. You've all had time to look in it. We have three candidates. So we'd like you to rank the three candidates based on the ranking sheet. So going across, there should be a maximum of six going across. So for each attribute, we want you to look at the resumes for the candidates. And we want you to look at them without, you know, kind of blind, but you can tell where they're from, from their resume. So the attributes that we're looking at are economic development. How would you rate them on that from as far as their strengths go? And we want you to rank the three candidates, one, two, three. Each of them gets a number. Who do you think is the strongest? Who's the least strong? And who would be in the middle for each of these attributes? So economic development, financial management, conservation, open space, energy, alternative energy, day-to-day operations, procurement, grants, that means handling of grants, you know, experience with grants, union negotiations, infrastructure projects, that could be anything from paving roads to building bridges, and then climate change awareness. So those are the things that we wanted you to look at. And then any comments you have. If you're working in a team, which all the groups here are, and so if you guys want a table, if you want to go over there, feel free, if that would be easier. So go ahead, read through and work, you know, together. You each have three sheets, one for each of you to rank individually and one to be turned in for discussion. So you discuss and you get your finals. So compare what you've done and then give us a final tally. So you're going to have to, in the end, agree. Does that make sense? Questions about that? All right. So for those of you watching at home, this is going to be kind of like watching people take a test. It isn't a test, but that's kind of what it's going to be like because this is really a workshop atmosphere. But we do have the owl and we're testing it out. So, and so I figure around quarter till, we'll stop and talk.
Question, Veronica?
Yeah.
So I just want to make it clear. So we did send out for all the unions to have a representation, representation there, but obviously we have a couple that didn't show up. Do we have a reason other than the fire that Marty was not available while the other department people didn't show up?
No, I don't know why. So I have a folder for highway water and I have a folder for the police union. But no, they, they did receive the announcement, so.
I do see some from water logging in right now.
The information is all here, so it's an in-person meeting. So there we have it.
Thank you.
And I thought each of the selectmen will each work on our own. So Joe, you two will each work on our own to fill it in. I'm going to be collecting these back at the end of the meeting. So people that aren't here.
I was just going to say, if you could explain exactly what we have in front of us so that everybody knows what we're doing.
All right. So what we have in front of us, thank you, Chaz, is the resume for candidate one, the resume for candidate two, and the resume for candidate three with candidate two. Right here. And the resume for candidate three. So the thought, and we also have a rating sheet. I don't know if people can see that with the cell. So everybody is going to go through, read through the candidates, through their resumes, looking for these attributes. And again, I made the attributes. So if there are, you know, anything else, that would be in the comment period. If you think that someone has a strength that wasn't brought out amongst these 10, then that would be the place we will do it. So, any other questions? Everybody's pretty much working here, so I think it's good to go. And when everybody's done that's in the room, we'll, we'll get together and talk. So I'm going to collect up the others because this is such that if people came in, I'm here almost every day. If people that weren't here wanted to come in at another time, they could sit and go through it.
Veronica, I just got to write all this down on a piece of paper because I can't print any of this. But I'll, it'll take me a minute.
Okay. You have plenty of time, I figure 30 minutes or so.
Yeah. And Mr. Shank, I, we were having some issues connecting. I don't know if you had similar problems, but it is a system thing. It wasn't individuals for each one of us. We're having problems with Outlook and SharePoint as well. I don't know if you had.
Yeah, I did. I did. I couldn't get on at all, so, but that's okay. So I just had just sent to me as an email, so I'm just printing it out. I'm not printing it right in it, but thanks.
Joe, you're bringing your mic again.
Is that me?
Better?
Joe, maybe you need to put the mic down further.
I'm not going to go down anymore. I mean, all right. Hang on, I got to try to figure this out. How's that? Not any better?
Oh, that's much better, actually. It did this wrong. Did it backwards.
We did it backwards? Do you need another one? I have X, that's. You mean you made one the highest and three? Well, your two are all good.
Well, when it said totals, I'm like, hey, wait a minute, what's going on here?
Right? Okay, this is interesting. Can we just say which one collectively we would like? Can we just say this is the one overall that we feel is?
You can put that in the comments. How much more time do you guys think you need? Maybe 10 more minutes?
You could probably pick one in 10 minutes, but only in a sheet.
Well, kind of get a feel from reading the resumes. It's way easier if you're talking to someone, you know, but we don't have that luxury yet.
Veronica.
Yeah.
So on this advisory rating, you got candidate one, you go down that list all the way down, candidate two, three. I don't quite understand the total, max six. What do you mean by that?
What I would do, okay, so we're rating each candidate on economic. One of the candidates gets a one, one gets a two, and one gets a three. So you're comparing them. So you want to, I would recommend reading the three resumes. And doing the attributes. Who do you think, financial management, who has, seems to have the strength? So if you total across, it's six. And then down at the bottom, when you do your totals going across, it should be six.
All right, I got you.
And then you have to think too, this is biased a little bit on how detailed their resumes are. That's everything. All of a sudden, all my emails, there's something wrong with them.
Yeah, it's been up and down all day.
All of a sudden, I've just been delivered 65 emails. Some from earlier this morning. That I didn't have earlier.
New world. This is the security. Yes, grants. So so far, one and one. And the rest of this is financial. It's quite a bit of them.
I just sent you a picture of the last.
Took a picture of the sheet.
Yeah. Just of my sheet. I let that owl work, it's good, huh?
And we got it running.
Just make sure, Veronica, you get Chaz to not Chaz, Dave to pay you for your services.
Right.
IT services, you know.
Yeah, we'll work on that. You hold on to that. I'll tell you when. We're going to talk.
Oh, okay.
It's kind of tight for me.
Two of them were really close for me, while they're actually tied. I'll be right back, guys.
I want to see yours. Can I see yours?
How bad did I do, Veronica?
I don't know. I haven't gotten yours yet.
I sent it to you.
I know, but I'm running this thing off my phone. Send it to Chaz.
Or selectmen.
Or selectmen. Can you send it to email?
Yeah, let me try, sure.
Wait, wait, maybe I caught it. Wait, hang on, hang on. No. No, this is the one that SharePoint isn't working. Never mind.
Yeah, it's right on that. That's the one, I put it on, but SharePoint's not working.
Let me try here. Huh, I got it, Joe. I got it. You have it? Did you get it?
No, I just sent it to you, Veronica. I don't want to highlight the open meeting law.
Oh, wait, I'm too high. It should be 60, right?
Yeah. Yeah, because the max is six. So if you have more than that, just give seven.
So this one is wrong.
Yeah. So. Do we have? First. Probably. That's a twenty. Four. It's not there.
I'm tight between.
Yeah.
This is mine, too. Between these two. This is a twenty.
Yeah, that's.
That's. Okay.
How bad we do?
I'm looking at yours now, Joe. I just want to see half of three of us. Oh, wow. This is. It's. First. Let's see. Joe, you broke the rules.
I broke the rules?
Yeah. Look at your economic development. You didn't give someone a two. You gave two ones and a three. You need to give someone a two. And same on conservation of place. Space. You didn't give anyone a three. You. You. Going across, you have to have. To the rules. You gotta have a six. Oh, I see what you. Oh. Huh. All right, you did it differently to me.
Yeah, I did it different, but that's my rating.
Thank you. Yeah, it's all right. We got yours.
That's your story. You stick it to him, right?
That's my rating. I'm sticking.
Got it. Got it. All right. I'm going to keep yours up, I think.
I just rated them how I felt. I would rate.
Yeah.
One, two, or three. You know what I mean?
Yep. So you. And you didn't follow the. In each category, you have to have a one, a two, or a three.
No, I just. Took. Down. Each resume. And I rated each resume down. What I thought.
No, that's not a bad way to do it either, huh?
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
That's a much better way to do it. Rate their.
Should have talked to you guys.
One is bad. Three is good. That's my opinion. You get a one, you didn't do so good. You got a three, you're good in that category.
Yeah.
Because all of them had some good strengths and some of them didn't.
Right. Right.
I'll be the rule breaker. That's where I'm going.
All right.
Yeah. Let's go.
All right, how are we doing? Can we kind of?
Very. We get it. Tonight. Yeah. All right. I'll. Test. Here. Or. Excuse. Joe.
Oh, woman. Four.
Yeah. All right. All right. I worked. Yeah. That. That works, you know? I didn't know.
Done?
Done. Really, we're done.
Yeah.
I'm working. I want to go to recess.
Not yet.
It's not time.
Not yet. We have to debrief and then we can go to recess.
From. Racks. I think so. Correct. Where's the donuts? Where's the donuts? We're going to.
I didn't even think of that.
All right. We just. We. We. Called it there. All right, we're done.
Right. Now. We're. My first. I'm.
Hi.
We go. Ready. Go. You. Two. Really. With. They were all. Just. At all.
Perfect.
You know. It wouldn't be possible. Right now. Anyway. Then you're still going to talk to them.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. People. Stop.
Going to see my. Yeah. I. I. Yes.
I think we have three. It is. And I think we have three.
Yeah.
Really. Next. Right. And. So. I'm. So. I'm. Thinking. I'm. My. So.
Stop it.
I just. Where's those? What's? They each have a little bit of different field.
Right. Yes. You use that through the resume, so. All right, I'm going to give you guys just a few more minutes. Because we want to wrap up no later than one fifteen. I mean.
Boy, your teacher's tough today.
I. I know. I mean, this was definitely life school.
It is. The time is.
Sorry, I. I was just thinking, well, how are we going to do this? And this. This gives you time with the resumes.
Right.
To look at.
You're going to talk about it.
Right.
But time is lunch break.
Snack. And nap.
I'm. I want to read. I guess. You're. You know. You do have.
They're making up.
I'd like to just say thank you to everybody participating. That's awesome.
My pleasure.
And. And for people that weren't able to make it today, we do have folders for them. And it's something that they can come in and just do on their own and provide us with. So.
Awesome.
I'm. I'm just going to give you guys a couple more minutes to finish up.
So.
But I do want an overall from the teams.
We're ready to give it to you.
All right, good.
Yeah. They're going to do the job. They're going to show. They're. Good. Right?
Yeah.
When it's one. It's going to do the same thing. They're going to show. They're. Doing. Everything.
So I'm going to try to get back. Soon.
I'm worried. You're.
No, I thought. Me. So. It was. I asked. You. Know.
And then I can slide your paper to one side, Joseph. I can see. While I'm doing. This.
So. Two. Two. Seven.
Yeah.
All right.
This is really working out well. I like this.
Yeah, that's. Because I can take on my screen, I have the owl itself, which have both you and Veronica in in one screen with the whole room on top. And all the other participants in it. Is that what you read?
Yeah.
Yeah. And if they if they. I think it'll, you know, zip to them as you'll see them.
Yeah.
But if you start talking, it recognizes you and then as you talk, it gets bigger. The two of you are talking. It's very funny.
So what happens when I start talking? What do you guys see?
We see you, just like we normally do on Zoom. You're on mine at least. You're a rectangle. We see you because you don't have the benefit of Yau because you aren't in the room. And the other people that aren't here, you know, we can see them as a rectangle just like you can't. And then I have a rectangle that has a panorama off and then two little boxes with me and Chaz in it.
So now, if you don't mind, can just somebody else speak in that room so I can just see what happens to that? Not you, Chaz.
Hello.
Hello, hello, hi.
Anything?
Yeah, no, it doesn't move at all. The little picture stays up top. That's okay.
Oh, this is the.
If I hang on, I'm going to try something here.
Projector and it can project the so we can all see.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking of doing in there.
All right.
So that we can put it on.
Yeah, you write it on and then and then everybody in the room can see all the Zoom people too.
Right, right.
Comes in.
We're still at 101.
I think it was a ring on it.
Yeah, that's what I need to do. I don't know how to do that.
Yeah, like we have the other one. We have a beautiful one, so we'll just use that. It'll be easier if we're trying to.
All right, so we'd like you to have one minute to wrap up if you can. If you want to stay a little after to finish, feel free. Kevin just got you, so he's going to be doing that too.
When are interviews?
Okay, so should we talk now? Should we just start?
Yeah.
So we're arranging the interviews. I had thrown out to all three. We do intend to interview all three candidates. And so the date that we had suggested was Tuesday, the 27th at our evening meeting to have all three come in. But one of them could only attend by Zoom and one of them was on vacation. What we're finding is between it's July and it's vacation. So I'm after today, I was going to send another letter and say, well, how about the 27th? And we would just do the interviews on Thursday, or the 29th. Just do the interviews that night. I mean, because it would be nice to have all three of them available. So if they're all three available, it would be that night. So but that's still under negotiation next week. We and we would like them to start in August. There's one of them who has vacations planned for the summer. I mean, all of these candidates are retired. That and that some of them have recently retired, someone, some of them not as recently. At least one of them is currently working as an interim. So there's they have different obligations. So the dates are different. One of them has an a vacation planned for in, I believe it's November. It's in the fall for two weeks or whatever, but we can work around that. So start dates are negotiable, but we would like someone in here in August to get get started and all. So that's the desire. They will be here, but again, it's negotiable, but we are probably looking at less than full time. And and hopefully through the special town meeting process, and I think if you were in the department head meeting, I had mentioned looking to hire full time later in the spring around town meeting. So so that search would begin after January or something. So let the interim get in and get get, you know.
Right, and the the plan is is to go over the budget process with the with the interim so that we don't have to.
Right.
Go through that, having somebody come on board and then be bogged down in the in the budget process. Because I personally would like the budget process to hit the day set it normally should so that we're not doing last minute stuff like.
And and we do kind of have two budgeting processes going on because we have to amend our FY '22 at the same time that we're kind of budgeting for FY '23. So there are there are financial pieces that will be time consuming.
Yeah, and the financial piece, one of the big financial pieces right now is helping us with the the COVID funding. There's a lot of ins and outs with that. And if somebody has an idea of where we're looking to go and where we are now, it's going to help us out in the long run, especially when we have to rely on the main fall town meeting, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
And with the start, same vein, the startup of ARPA.
Yeah.
You know, and that's still in progress as far as, you know, Jared did the application for the town, so we're all set with that. We are accepting the funding, but then what can that be used for? So someone to help with that, where we go with that funding, so. Yeah. So these are the three candidates. We had for the process, the names that we got, we got from DLS, DOR. They gave us seven, well, eight candidates, all eight. We did not advertise on MMA. This is an interim position. We'll do it when we do the real search. So we sent letters to all of the candidates. I had talked with one of them early on in June. And and then it became apparent that we needed a little more time before we went out for an interim. So we sent again at the end of about a week and a half ago. And we got from the seven, I knew the eighth person had it's had already accepted an interim position somewhere else. So of the seven that I sent out to, that we sent out to, not, well, a week ago, a little over a week ago. We heard back from six of them. One of them never got back to me. So of them, these are the three that were available now. There's a fourth one who is still working right now. And so if it comes to November timeframe and we still need someone, that person, and then I got back to notes. We're not doing interim. These are all retirees. So. Um, they said. So they're. They're busy. They are. So these are the three that we have that we wanted to look at. And so I guess my, I don't know. Should we do rankings or should we go? I I kind of want to get the numbers for us to look at when we're when we're interviewing to consider after meeting a person. But the the resumes, two of them were pretty detailed. I mean, we had a five page resume, a three page resume, and a one page resume. And so you can't always tell just from what's written down what the person has done. We really do need to interview all three. So there are limitations to that, but I guess. What what if you could just comments? Should I just ask for comments from you guys?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so let's start with Justin and Emmy. Someone has to talk. Yau's looking at you.
We are all in agreement. The two of us are in agreement with three. We were pleased with the overall experience and oversight. We were really, it felt like candidate two shouldn't have been in there just because the resume was so widely divergent. Like it was literally a cover sheet of a job description. It didn't actually have any meat in it. So it's kind of like, you know, ones down the board, like there was nothing to really compare. So but going through with candidate one and two was pretty tight or yeah, one and three. And we did appreciate that there was extra extra community activity attached to to candidate three that showed again a depth to their community outreach that isn't necessarily found in just a TA. There's a lot of volunteer stuff, a lot of other committees they belong to. And although we candidate one had high numbers, it was way too finance heavy. And we do believe we need a TA that has financial background, but that has a wider range of service and knowledge of town movements. So that's number three for us. We just, like I said, it was pretty tight, but candidate one. Our town, yes, is having financial difficulties, but we're more than just our finances. And we do believe even in the interim, we need somebody that can have a broader picture of what we are. And candidate three worked with a lot of other types of departments at a lot of other towns that just appealed to us.
Thank you. Jared and Stacy.
I think Emmy hit it right on the head. We also were kind of going back and back and forth with number one and number three based on the information that was provided to us. Personally, I really liked that candidate three had six or nine years as a selectman, which I think is huge. I agree also with what Emmy said about the, you know, being a little bit more well rounded, whereas number one is very finance heavy, which is a great, great, great experience to have. It was a pretty, pretty tight call between one and three for us, but we did come out with preference to number three.
And Jody and Chandler.
It's already been so well said already, but basically the same. I mean, we were looking primarily for union stuff, labor.
Yep.
And number three, I think, mentions that a little bit more. And again, as much as financial is really important, I sometimes it can be a detriment if that's all we're looking at. And like there just wasn't a whole lot of day to day human interaction.
I was really, when you looked at it, it was right brain, left brain, like.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because again, yeah, left brain, right brain. Right, yeah. Because there's more to it than just numbers on the paper.
Right, right. And and they do. Number three does mention regular relations and human resources experience, which is really important, as important sometimes as the financial piece of it. And and they do have the financial piece and some experience with grant writing, so. Initially, my gut feeling was to go with candidate one, but the more I looked at this, the more I felt like number three was the better candidate.
We would love to see something more detailed from candidate two because that's the day to day is actually exceptional, like that. And I think that if we were in a, if we were in a more stable place, we would have gone more heavy on candidate two because it's very day to day and, you know, ready to just get the entire overall job done because we just don't have specifics. But because you guys were looking for some very specific things, we had to go with the ones that had specific information.
And I think all of your feedback is something that we're going to be taking into the interview because we can now expound on what you're explaining to us now because those questions are also questions that we would have as well.
You know, it's really, you know, any candidate can put anything he wants on writing on a resume. But I think once we do that interview in person, it kind of tells a lot about that candidate.
Yeah, definitely.
Agree, agree. I will say too, that candidate three was really the only one that had anything that had to do with open spaces because they were a part of the rail trail committee. Like it was really. That's exactly what I did. None of them have anything really to do with community services. And that was kind of disappointing, obviously on my end and Jess as well.
What do you what do you do in your spare time? That's what I want to know.
Like what part of the community are you? What kind of community services are your are a important? And it doesn't seem like they are for any of us, so we sort of took that out of the loop. But again, as a rail trail at least. Like, you know, so that was kind of like, okay, so at least they have an outside an office. And they're, they think that's important. Yeah, it was it was basically, yeah, basically one and three and and one just wasn't as well rounded. It just didn't feel as human, didn't seem as human. But I agree with Joe. In person is absolutely, you know, key. Yeah. To wear those.
They could look on paper very human and come out very. I've experienced that.
Contributing, you know, I I think, you know, I contribute to five people and I think these two are definitely the best. I'm like, whoa.
Not the best.
This is great, so yeah.
Yeah.
You never know.
Right.
Well, it was hard to, but I wanted you to take time with the resumes and look through them. And I I think that that accomplished this, but it was hard with just the one page resume.
Yeah.
We really need more. We really need the face to face interview. And put that cover sheet on top and we'll take those back. So it's 1:07, so thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It it was, yeah, it it actually helps us a lot.
Yeah.
So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
And I'm I'm going to ask you to put the, yeah, put who you are, like if you're non-union, if you're clerical, if you're supervising, if you're fire, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you very much, everybody. We appreciate it and.
Thanks, everybody.
We have a meeting tomorrow night. But next week will be the interviews and you'll see it posted. And.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, you guys. See you later.
See ya.
Thanks a lot.
Blases dismissed.
But we still have 2:20, Joe.
We do have one more thing.
Yeah, we're still on our agenda, right? Yeah.
Right, that's who I added at the beginning, just that.
Now, quick question, quick question. I think we tomorrow night's agenda doesn't look like there's a lot on there. Is that correct?
Tomorrow's is light. Yeah, tomorrow's is light.
Because I may, I'm I'm going to try to get back out of the mountains to get back into cell service around that 6 o'clock. I'll do my best.
I think we have tomorrow night, we have the, well, like, we have the discussion of the Greenville Road Bridge. And we're meeting with the water department regarding the water commissioners, et cetera, with respect to PFAS treatment. So I think it's our the two big things on the agenda.
And then we have the executive session.
And we do have an executive session tomorrow. Let me look at how many agendas here somewhere. So. Yeah, we have a few appointments. It's not, it's it's a lot to talk about, but there aren't. Well, we need to discuss minimum wage. We need to discuss the test management and landscaping. I want to talk.
If I, if I didn't get in in time, that would be fine. You guys could just update me.
Yes, we can do that, absolutely.
All right, I'm going to try. Of course, I'll try, but it might be late. That's fine.
Okay. All right. All right, so I had I had attached a letter to the SharePoint, I believe, last night. And I I just wanted to discuss where the the date on that and and then outside of the letter, the account for payment. So I I am thinking. Well, I don't know that we actually need, I guess I want to vote on the letter, but the letter is theory is correct. I'm going to change the date to the next payroll.
Which which letter are you talking about, Jeff?
The one regarding vacation payout.
Okay, perfect. All right, yeah, I I seen that. All right, yeah. I I am going to have to agree with that letter. I mean, I I read it also and nowhere in there did we give a specific date. So I am not very kind of in the lichens to get my back put against the wall. That payment will get made when we we make that payment.
And it will be sooner rather than later. I I just wanted an opportunity to look through the budget and see where things fit, keeping in on the amendments for special town meeting and what makes sense. So I think I have that figured out. It, I think that we will amend police and fire in chief salaries in the fall and take it all out of wage settlement. I was thinking differently, but I think that's what will happen. I think it can happen sooner rather than later, if that's the case, so. I would just like communications to come to the Board of Selectmen.
Yes, absolutely. I I think it's very important that we have to make it very well known that any and all communications have to go through the board via either the interim town administrator and then to us or whatever, but the personal calls and conversations have got to stop.
Okay, all right, well. That's that's it. I just wanted a an okay on the letter.
I'm good. Do we need a vote on that?
I think we do because we're working as a board. I I didn't feel we're just doing it myself because I I'm really not able to make calls on my own. You know what?
Chaz, you want to make that motion or do you want me to?
No, I can make the motion, Joe. Thank you. I moved that we approve the letter written by the Chair regarding vacation buyback to the former TA.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Cinduranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. Thank you, you guys. I'm going to sign it from the three of us.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right. And with that, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, you want to just go over our next meetings?
Oh, oh, yes, sorry. I I don't have any updates and reports. Sorry, I stole your announcements and communications. We have a meeting tomorrow anyway. Our next meetings are tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM and that is posted. Right now, I have a July 23rd at noon. I haven't, I have to post that on Wednesday. So I think after tomorrow's meeting, we can make the decision whether or not we need a Friday meeting this week for the 23rd. So it'll depend on what's on our, each of our plates.
Fine.
With that, a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn at 1:15.
Second.
In favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Cinduranian, yes.
Yeah, I will call them, see when their available appointments are.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.